I call to order the February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Adrian City Commission. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
But to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its parents. On the mission under our individual with liberty and liberty for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Commissioner Schwartz.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Schwartz?
Some of.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Banky and Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion carried.
At this time, we will have public comment for items that are on the agenda. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. And just to also clarify and remind you that the commissioners and myself will not respond to public comment. It is a time for you to make your comment, but it is not a dialogue time, and we, there will be a, there would not, will not be a response. Sorry about that. After we have exhausted all of our comments within the city chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Hi, Jared Tim, Adrian resident. Um, I'd like to point out, uh, some critical issues that have impacted our local government in regards to the city administrator and highlight, um, an opportunity to fix them as we move forward with the search for a new administrator. Uh, first, the difficulty in advancing ideas and changes. Uh, during conversations with several current and previous commissioners, I was told that to move an idea forward, I need to dissecure the support of at least four commissioners to pressure the city administrator into action. Uh, the process felt unnecessary burden, unnecessarily burdensome, burdensome, and created a barrier between residents and their local government. It also shifted responsibility away from the administrator and onto commissioners, which is not efficient or transparent, transparent way to govern. Uh, to address this, I recommend creating a clear, transparent process for residents, um, and commissioners to, uh, propose and implement new ideas. The process should be straightforward, accessible, and free from the unnecessary hurdles, um, ensuring good ideas can be heard and acted upon without delay. Second, the lack of structure, uh, structured review process for the city administrator. During the tenure, tenure of our former administrator, I asked a couple of commissioners about the yearly review process and how it worked. It seemed there was no formal framework for the eval, for evaluating their performance. Uh, without clear measurable goals or metrics tied to the city's comprehensive plan, it was difficult to assess whether the administrator was effectively serving our community's needs. The lack of accountability not only hindered progress, but also left residents like me questioning whether our priorities were being addressed. Uh, not, not with the city administrator position, Banky, we have an opportunity to correct this. I urge the commission to establish a formal evaluation process that includes clear measurable goals aligned with the city's comprehensive plan. This will ensure that the next administrator is held accountable and that their work directly supports our community's long-term vision. In closing, I want to emphasize that this is a pivotal moment for our city. By creating a more transparent system for advocating ideas and establishing a structured review process for the next city administrator, you could demonstrate to the community that our, our local government is responsive, accountable, and focused on the future. Thank you for your time.
We will now open the public comment for items on the agenda to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, we are going to move on to our work-study session. Number one, within the work-study session, is our administrator search discussion. Commissioner Banky has been doing a lot of research and is going to present some ideas for us to discuss and look at as we move forward in this. Um, with interim administrator Vince Emmerich's approval, I did ask Heather Lasky, our HR director as well, to look into, because she had already approached me and told me she had many resources. So she has put these amazing books that you have here on different firms, and she's going to be talking about those as well within this discussion. Commissioner Banky.
We're gonna try something different to help with, uh, the sound here, so I'm gonna stand up there so we all talk into our microphones instead of looking down the aisle and not talking into our microphones. So, uh, we'll see if Michelle's theory in mind works or not. So I shared with the, um, the commission a copy of the best practices from the International Society, uh, of City County Management Association Recruitment Guidelines for Selecting a Local Government Administrator. And as, uh, as we go through this process, uh, you'll continue to see in a number of the proposals, you'll hear from a number of, uh, individuals that this is probably one of the most important decisions that a local, uh, governing body makes in terms of, uh, hiring the one or two or several employees that, uh, the commission oversees. So as we know, uh, with us in our setting, it's the city administrator and the city attorney, uh, our, our direct, uh, reports, and then we have our city clerk is kind of divvied up between, uh, direct report to us, but then also some work from the city administrator as well. Um, so the overview here that, uh, I want to talk about, uh, again, is just kind of the start of the conversation so that we can look at the big picture perspective of things moving forward, have the conversations, uh, listen to the information that we received from our HR department, and then, uh, us collectively kind of coming up from, uh, here. So, uh, tonight's presentation is going to focus on, again, those best practices of, uh, the, uh, ICMA guide, and then optional practices. So this is really an opportunity, so even though there's, you know, these are suggestions, as we move forward as a commission, we really have an opportunity. Um, I've heard one, one citizen speak today, we have an opportunity to customize that search and what are some of the things that we want these search firms to do as we move forward. And, um, as we look through these options, you'll see there's many menu, uh, choices, many different selections that can take place, uh, through this process. And those, uh, can take additional time, those can take additional, uh, research, but it's one of those things that as we move forward, we want to make sure that we, um, go through, um, not only the selection process of selecting the city administrator and being most comfortable with the final candidate that we select, but we need to back up first. And we need to be most comfortable with the search firm that we search. So think of speed dating in, uh, some regards. We have our profiles that we're looking at, and we're swiping left or right at this point as we go through the, um, through the packet. And we'll be moving forward in terms of what are the, um, the choices of possible search firms of who we would want to have come in and do an interview with us. And then from that point, um, who would we select as the, uh, search firm, and then move that along to, um, having the process defined and created for what that search firm looks like. So we kind of see the overview of, uh, the best practices, those are the, our major bullet points that we have within the guide, uh, that we gave out, uh, this weekend. If we go to the next slide here, um, we've completed step one, so that's great, uh, in terms of identifying the interim, uh, administrator. And then from this is now initiating the recruitment process. As we move through this, um, that's gonna trigger a lot of work that needs to take place from the search firm, from HR, from us, from our community as we begin to ramp up for that. Uh, there's gonna need to be a lot of discussion as well with our city attorney as we begin to talk about what are the components that need to take place within, uh, a contract. And that then also needs to be balanced with, uh, the human resource department, because while, um, a commission may have great ideas and say, hey, let's do this. Uh, we'll hear in a little bit that there is a process that, uh, HR uses when it comes to setting salary, and we want to make sure that we are within that process. And if the commission wants to change, uh, that, that, uh, we have the guidance of HR as we, uh, as we move forward. And then we get into the actual recruitment phase, uh, that we see here, and, uh, we'll talk about, uh, again, establishing that profile of what our city looks like and how we can recruit the best individual for that position. Because, um, when we look at the search process, you can do something as simple as, I mean, we could update the profile that we had from last time, change the dates, change some numbers on there, put it on a website, and do the search ourselves. Um, that is probably not the best practice, and you see that, um, the examples from the firms that have submitted proposals, we want someone that is actually going to be working hard to recruit, to get to know the city, and at the same time have a, a vast book of individuals that are interested in, uh, positions of the role of city administrator. And the important piece here is that there's that give and take, that a recruiter knows someone that, uh, is interested in coming to a town that's very similar to, uh, Adrian, or someone who may not be a current city administrator, someone that is, um, potentially a current department head in another city or an assistant, uh, city administrator. So those are all options that we want to make sure that, uh, they have a book of recrutees that, uh, they can bring forward to us, um, in addition to those job postings, and then we would go through the selection process. Um, and then on to, um, the negotiation process, once we finish that piece. Uh, again, that's the important piece where we would have HR and the city attorney, uh, in place with us as we start, uh, to identify, uh, the final aspects of that. Because the last thing you want, uh, and you could see some of these examples with, um, nearby schools and superintendents where there was a final candidate that was chosen, and that final candidate decided to not accept the position from that, uh, school district. So we want to make sure that as we go through this, that, uh, it's working best from, from both sides as well, and that we're clear and transparent. And then with the understanding that, um, in most cases, hopefully in all cases, there's gonna be a transition period from when, um, the person is selected and they wrap up their employment at their previous, uh, place, and then how they transition down, uh, here to, to Adrian as well. And those obviously look different at different aspects as well, depending on who the, the person is selected, where they're currently at, and potentially where they live as well. Next slide, please. So when we look at what Adrian wants, uh, through this process, uh, one of the areas that, um, should come to light is community stakeholder input for the creation of the position. And here, this is probably the best example of establishing an opportunity for city employees, for department heads, uh, for city residents, for business owners, DDA, education. You could pick all the groups of different stakeholders, um, that you could think of, and actually, once we select who the search firm is, to have, um, focus groups with that search firm so that they can compile the best, um, options for us, so that we know what the input is from, from our stakeholders. And these can be, not only would I recommend that we would do these from, uh, stakeholder focus groups and opportunities for, uh, the search firm to sit down with, uh, city employees, to sit down with department heads and so forth, but, uh, the options for online components. And that really then begins to help prioritize what that job posting, uh, and position announcement looks like as well. Because we want to make sure that, that position posting that we put out there isn't just, uh, a quick overview of here's all the duties that are gonna happen. We really want to highlight and sell our city, um, and, um, the good and the bad and the current aspects of it, the environmental scan essentially of what's, uh, taking place. And when we were working with, um, reviewing our previous posting, um, we kind of came up with the understanding that we thought there could have, uh, been a better, uh, focus on, uh, key aspects of our city included in that, uh, in that posting. Compensation, um, I'll have Ms. Lasky talk about the HR department standards in terms of that, but as we move forward, there's also a conversation about, uh, potential for merit pay as that's related to specific goals. So, uh, how that looks within the contract and the evaluation components of that, uh, is something, uh, up for consideration. Not, uh, saying that we have to have that, uh, relocation expenses, uh, I know that was one of, uh, the things that we heard a lot, uh, in the last, uh, number of years. And, uh, I know that, I'll use the example, when I was on the library board and we hired the new library director, uh, we built in, uh, relocation expenses for her. So she lived in Marshall, when she, uh, was going to relocate, uh, the library board was very, uh, committed to having her live in the city of Adrian. Again, not something that we can require as part of the law or part of the contract, but, uh, there was an encouragement, uh, for her to live there through a relocation expense. And lo and behold, our library director for, uh, the Adrian District Library is now a proud city of Adrian resident. So, uh, those are opportunities for us to, uh, consider as we move forward. Um, I think, uh, the conversation with the search firm and the consultant, uh, related to what the schedule looks like and how that gets built out is something that, um, will be a fruitful discussion for us. Because as they taught you in superintendent school, when I went through it, it was always said that the school board that hires you is not the school board that fires you. So, um, not saying that we're gonna be firing our new city administrator, but, um, in terms of the fact that coming up in November, there's, uh, an election coming up. And when we talk about stability, uh, we have some comments that were made already about, um, how do we make sure that we ensure Adrian's a place that attracts a city administrator applicant to the area? Um, is the makeup of the commission going to change? And I know that relates to, uh, some commission members, and if they're running for reelection, those sort of things. So those are questions that I'm sure candidates would, uh, have questions about as well. The geographic scope, obviously, uh, with job posts and so forth like that, those would be, you know, accessible throughout the entire, uh, country. But looking at the packages that we have, all of the firms except one are from Michigan. Uh, so having an understanding of, uh, applicants within the state of Michigan is great, uh, obviously, as they work within the confines of the, um, laws and statutes of the state of Michigan and the local, uh, municipalities, that's a, a key point for us. And then other, you know, so again, this is what do we want as a commission, how can we engage our community, and how can we pick the individual that's the, the best choice for the city of Adrian? And then we'll go on to the next slide. And, uh, with that, uh, we'll have, uh, Ms. Lasky talk a little bit about, uh, um, the work that has taken place with the search firm proposals that she's prepared for us.
Good evening. So I put together some binders for each of you with information from, the first thing I did was reach out to HR colleagues of mine kind of across Michigan. And the information in your binders is the top firms, I guess, the, the most used firms by, um, cities across Michigan. So this is really the list of who the people in Michigan are using for their searches. Uh, some are smaller than others, there's some really large firms in there, and there's some, uh, smaller firms. And, uh, I did receive some useful feedback from my colleagues, uh, that have used these various firms. Um, and I, you know, it was actually mostly good feedback, which is great. Um, some preferred, obviously, to use a larger firm, and some thought that, um, a smaller firm was, um, maybe a more personalized experience. So that's really gonna boil down to what you all as commissioners are looking for, um, during your search. Uh, the, as you can see in the binder, some of these firms have given extensive information. So there's, um, examples of materials that they've put together for other cities that they've worked with, which I think is very helpful, if you can get a kind of feel for what their job postings and their information looks like. Um, so I, I think that'll be a lot of information to go through, uh, to do a comparison. It may obviously take a while, uh, to look through all of that, um, but it does appear for the most part that each of these firms, um, can create a somewhat customizable experience. So that's a good thing. Um, they don't have a sort of, um, you know, one-stop menu, so the services that you are looking for, they can really customize an experience for Adrian. Uh, there appears to be a couple of different pricing structures from different firm to firm. Um, there are those that have a base price and then, you know, uh, additional fees for, uh, any add-on services that you're looking for. And then there's those that have, uh, two or three-tier structure, so they have a basic sort of service that includes, you know, certain, obviously posting the job and just the very basics. Then they'll have a, a more middle-of-the-road service level, and then a really extensive, um, tier of, of pricing. So, again, somewhat customizable, um, so really, decisions will just have to be made with regard to, you know, what, what you really want them to do for you. And there are some of the firms that will even go well beyond placing a candidate, recruiting and placing a candidate. So I thought that was very interesting that there's services available well into the first year of the candidate's, um, placement. So there are services available to come in and assist with goal-setting, to assist with, uh, team-building, sort of beyond, um, just bringing in a candidate. So that is available, obviously, as an option, uh, if that's something that you're interested in looking into. Um, all of the firms do have a guarantee, um, built into their pricing, so, uh, that's one of the reasons why I think it's a good idea to use a, a search firm, um, because they're gonna do the hard work with recruiting a good candidate, because if they don't, they're gonna have to do it all over again for you. Um, so it's nice to have that guarantee. They all look a little bit different, uh, with the way that their structure is, but, uh, they all do have some sort of guarantee in place. So I will, the pricing that is in the binders that you see from these firms is not specific to the city of Adrian, so I can be as involved or not involved as you want, um, with going back to those firms once you kind of narrow down your, your search and, uh, getting more specific pricing information for the services that you really are after. Um, Commissioner Banky mentioned the, some of the things that are, will go into negotiating a contract or, um, you know, uh, the negotiation process, I guess, when, when it comes to a candidate that you're interested in. Um, so I guess the things that I would want to mention are just, um, from a compensation standpoint, we do have a compensation study that was adopted by a former city commission, um, years ago. And that does dictate what the, um, salary range is for our city administrator position. So we just want to make sure, obviously, from a negotiation standpoint, that we're staying within that scale. Um, obviously, everything's negotiable to a certain degree, so if you did want to negotiate something different than that, it would have to be not, you know, not just the salary. It would have to be some sort of additional thing that you would do for merit pay or something like that, um, in addition to the base salary. Um, the other thing I would mention is that there are some, uh, guidelines that we have to follow with regard to fringe benefits and insurance and that kind of thing. We do have some rules in place from our carriers, so we just need to be, that would be something that I would maybe want to be involved with if, uh, we get to that point, just to make sure that we're following all of our guidelines from our insurance carriers and things.
And then as we move forward with the, um, next steps, so as we talk about this, uh, after our presentation, uh, so what we'll do is try as much as we can to get an apples-and-apples comparison, and then, uh, HR can follow up to start, uh, getting some specifics, uh, if we are that productive tonight. But I think it really does come down to the importance of looking at, um, us, because we need to be comfortable with the search firm and, uh, investigating them. There's a number of references that are listed there, and I will say from, uh, again, another nearby school district that had, uh, a number of superintendents over the last, uh, three years, uh, that choosing a search firm's important, and that their school board made the decision not to go with, uh, the same search firm, even though they had the guarantee, uh, in place to do that free search, because they wanted to make sure that, uh, they had a different experience. And we don't want to go down that road of, uh, doing this in, uh, another year. We want to make sure that the firm that, uh, we select collectively we're seeing is the best choice for all of us and is going to work, uh, with us, uh, well. Uh, so you calling out, uh, those references that, uh, are listed, I think are, uh, really good key homework components for us as, uh, we move into our next meeting. And then we can discuss at our, um, next meeting where, what direction we want to, uh, take. And the hope would be on the next slide that we would look, uh, at our March third meeting of reviewing the proposals of the firms that we have, uh, in place, and then comparing, uh, those costs and services, and then at that point, share any feedback that we've received from the phone calls that we made to individuals. I talked to Dan Swallow already, and, uh, he gave me, uh, some really good information that, uh, um, you know, is stuck in my head and like, some good feedback on, uh, some key players and some feedback to maybe avoid, uh, a player as well. So I think those are important things for us to, uh, take place between now and then and share that feedback. And then as we move forward, thinking about the next slide here, uh, looking at, do we look at March seventeenth, April seventh, or do we schedule a special meeting to hear those presentations? Uh, do we narrow it down to two, three? I don't know, that's, uh, for us to, uh, decide collectively. Uh, ask clarifying questions, uh, talk about our specific, uh, examples here in Adrian of where we've been the last couple of years and how we can have someone, um, hopefully, our, um, goal is to have someone here on a much longer-term basis, even though the average term for a city administrator is, um, you know, in the three-to-four-year, uh, timeframe. And then we would make a, a selection, that's the first selection, of what search firm we have, and then moving forward to that next slide, um, what, uh, what that looks like in terms of the planning process, because a lot of take, uh, needs to take from there, uh, developing our per-position profile, and the hope there would be that we would have stakeholder input, getting that, uh, posting, uh, out there, setting, uh, interview timeline or selection, uh, process. And really here, the selection process, uh, hope would be having, uh, stakeholder input on that. And that, uh, you'll see many examples in the proposals here. This is where, once we get through round one and we're down to the finalists, that we would have the stakeholders here stay a day in the city of Adrian and meet with probably the same. and meet with probably the same stakeholders that uh we spoke about earlier. So sit down with the city employees and answer a Q and A so that uh city employees can ask questions. And then at the end, fill out a survey that uh comes back to us to review and what's their take on that individual. And then uh department heads, city residents, uh DDA, uh again, on and on. That uh stakeholder input um probably would work great with the firm that we search. And they would have so many good ideas or examples of how they did that uh very successfully with uh other municipalities as well. And then uh creating the the transition timeline uh as we wrap up and make that final selection. Hopefully, that individual accepts our offer and we go through uh again, the background check piece and uh move forward with that. And the next slide uh that we really need to work on and consider is there's a lot of moving balls in the air at the same time. So is the current um position description accurate? Uh we need to, you know, look at that and review. Is everything up to date from the last time? Uh we heard an example from public comment about the evaluation tool and uh to put you on the spot, Burke, but um guidance from that and the contract, I think you would probably be involved in those components and would recommend we take a hard look at those. And then um what supports do we want for our next uh city administrator? And this, I think, becomes really nice when you look at a lot of these proposals, the full aspect and the full spectrum that a lot of these uh firms provide go well beyond just um, just a search firm. So they, a lot of these will have strategic planning. Uh some of them do team building. Uh others uh really focus on evaluation development or evaluation training, working with the commission, working with department heads. So all of those are ways that we can make sure that when we hire that city administrator, that it's not um the expectation, just like when we hired Vince, here's the keys, you're in charge, you know everything now. Uh so we want to make sure that there's that ongoing support. So throughout that uh thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan, that first year, that um that new city administrator can pick up the phone and have a professional um firm to say, hey, how do I address this uh ish, the strategic planning issue? So the mentoring component. You know, we're, the city's in the middle of strategic planning. I think we could, you know, do this or rework some of these things. What are the ways that I can build capacity for my department heads to best align to the mission and vision of the city commission? So those are all options that are out there to really help coach that person along too, because we need to uh understand that we might not have a city administrator that comes in with fifteen, twenty years' experience, that, again, they could be at the department-level role and they're learning the same way. And we need to make sure that we're providing them supports as they're in that role. And then uh on the flip side, as we talk about contract requirements, uh what we want included with that. And again, relocation expenses, are there specific merit pay goals? Are there goals that need to be developed? Uh self-assessments from that city administrator, uh quarterly evaluations? Those are all things that uh can be involved in that package. And it helps to have these ahead of time so that when the person's applying or the person's in the final stages, that it's not a big surprise. And they're like, oh, you want to do a three-sixty evaluation? And a three-sixty's evaluation is where you have department heads provide input, the commission provide input, city residents provide input. That could scare some uh candidates away. Uh so making sure that we have that clear. I'll go back to the library example. When the library board selected Jen, uh we had previously had two evaluations that we narrowed it down to from um professional organizations. And we said, as a library board, we're comfortable with these two. Which one would you like us to use? She picked one from the library, the American Library Association, and I believe they still use that today for um their evaluation. So those are things that we need to be working on. At the same time, we're going through the search process. Uh so that component of the most important act that we make uh isn't just one sole act of hiring a person. There's a lot of steps along the way. And with that, um that um basically wraps up um our presentation for today. Happy to take any questions, or if there's no questions, then I'll jump back over there and then we can talk.
I have, I have a couple. Sorry. Um I maybe comments and questions, I guess, all the way around. So um, do we want to put a committee together to help? I know you've done a ton of work on this, Commissioner Banky, but Mayor, do you want to put a committee together to maybe help um make some of the decisions of how we want to make these steps? So I know you've done, Commissioner Gauss, and you did some work with the gentleman out of Kalamazoo.
Oh, yep.
To do the, with the three-sixty eval. Do we want to get those things in place? Have a committee help get some of those things in place, the description, things like that, before we reach out to one of these agencies, I guess? Um I, maybe it gives us a better idea of what we're looking for in these agencies. If we have a completed, you know, job description, eval plan, things like that. Um I also want to, you know, something that I have heard many, many times is we need like homegrown or we need someone from here. Um I helped you do a principal search at APS and it didn't go very well for us. Um he left after that first year um and you put someone from home in place and that works very well. And and Nate Parker's doing a great job as a superintendent, but you didn't come from here and you you are now entrenched in our community. So before we spend money on this and we create, I I mean, I agree with the eval and all that, job description, things like that. Um is it necessary to spend this money to do this if we have an inside candidate that could fulfill all the things that we want?
So what I would say, and again, I'll just use my experience with the the school district lens of uh things. So um you, if you ha, if there's an heir apparent and everyone is, oh, yep, this is the person that we want. Think of Jim Hartley and Ryan Rowe from back in the day, you know. With Jim knew he was on his way out. He hired Ryan to be the assistant superintendent. And that school board just basically had said uh he's going to be the next superintendent. Uh so when Jim retired, boom, it was there. It wasn't a surprise to anyone. And that uh it was kind of like on-the-job training in that assistant superintendent role for Ryan. Now, that while Brian, you know, was here, that's great. But he then took a different position in a role that was more aligned with career technical uh components. So we think back when we uh hired Nathan and, you know, experience and someone from the outside. But then that was the um, you know, several years and then moved into a different position. So to answer your question, there's no way to look in the, you know, magic eight ball to see where, if that person's going to be here long-term or um to see that even if they are homegrown, if they're going to be successful in the role that uh that they had. But I think it's important from that previous hiring experience to make sure that um there's an evaluation process that you and I were on, that that there's an evaluation process and that uh conversations need to take place. So if someone needs to uh transition to a different location, then that takes place. So that was a big maybe.
There is one. Is, so is i- is that something that we as a commission want to put a committee together that works with uh Ms. Lasky, um the city attorney? And um kind of puts those ducks in a row for us? And I don't know if I'm not, I'm just spitballing this, I really don't know. But we have had some department heads that have been here a very long time. Is is do? And before we go jump into a committee and spend money, or excuse me, one of these agencies and spend money, is there someone qualified to do that? Just, just a thought. I'm not.
What, what some, some district, school districts have done is, as they've done that, they have um just like internal and external. So they've held internal postings and then they've done interviews and then um they've done external. Um the downfall with that is you, if you do that in two steps, you don't know what the potential is from the outside. And um if you do that and you look at your internal candidates and then you say, I want to look at the outside candidates and we don't want to select you, that's kind of, or we're gonna wait and see that has maybe some morale issues uh to like, oh, they, do they want me? Do they not want me? So it's, it's a difficult, difficult step.
Is this something, Heather, I guess I would ask you, that we could put out to see the interest? Um I've, I've heard rumors, but I don't want to go off rumors, that there might be interest internally. But um is this something that um, you know, that we could look at? Like, maybe there is a committee that looks at all of these things that need to get put into place, like the job description and all of that, and that committee looks at that, at that. And while we're all looking at these firms in the next couple of weeks before the next meeting, maybe, I don't know, I don't know if that's a thing where we can find out, is there interest internally? And like, so that we know that before we go that route and, or, you know, or make a decision what we want to do with that. But I, I don't know. I don't know how that process looks or how would it even go about that?
Yeah, I don't think there is a formal process in place, um which is a good thing. Um we definitely can gauge interest internally if you want us to do that, uh whether it's in the form of, you know, formally posting the job or just kind of, you know, putting it out there just to see if anybody has interest um and then letting them know that they would apply through the the greater process um when it gets posted externally as well. So it can be done either way, absolutely. I do think we want to do, take those steps though first, as in con, create the eval. Like, we came up with some things that we know we need to change before we move forward, right? Um I do think that those things need to be put in place before we even suggest internal, external, anything like that. I just wanted to say that I want someone that wants to be in my community. Um and you, you came and you stayed, Bob, and that's great, but that hasn't always happened for us. And so I want someone that's been in our community and wants to stay in our community, if that's possible. Um and it may not even be, you know, someone that works for the city right now, but is a city resident that has experience and, you know, so there, there's some opportunity there. Um but I do think that we need to put the eval program, look, I don't know, I keep calling it a program, I don't know why, but eval, the contracts, all that, I think we need to get that in place before we even have that conversation because we want to make some positive change in that list that that you had.
And and there's no harm in, if we decide at the ne, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
There's no harm, right? If we, at the next meeting, if we all come back from doing our homework and say, hey, these three or four firms look, you know, real viable, like what we really want to do, we want to interview them. It's not like we're making the decision at that point and maybe we do find out there's an internal candidate that looks really great and we just never go with them, but we start that interview process with the firms to get that going so that we're not too behind on that?
We could. The one thing that I would caution would be that if we go down that road, we haven't had any stakeholder input.
I think that's important in creating, I don't want to say the contract, but the goals for the administrator. Do we need one of these agencies to help us gather that stakeholder input? Or is that something that we can do on our own?
Right. A- and that could be twofold, that because we, we could have a facilitated um stakeholder input from the first component, where you say, what do we want in our next city administrator? And then we could gather that information and we could prioritize the key elements of tho, that components. Um and that could easily be done on our, on our own and set that up. So we're not necessarily hiring a firm um because, you know, that feedback you're going back to, um, you know, whether it's a a principal or not, uh, you know, we want someone from Lenway County. And then I guarantee there's going to be people that like, we want fresh blood and we want someone from the outside and experience, you know. So vice versa on both sides. And is any one answer better than the other? No, but it uh at least gives, again, um those stakeholder groups an opportunity to share um from their perspective. And again, so if we look at, oh, our residents want someone from the inside, but maybe our employees want someone from the outside, you know. So those are at least good data points for us to hear and discuss as we move forward.
So.
I- if we didn't hire a firm, is it within your wheelhouse that you could, Heather, do the um input from the city employees um on what they want to see in an administrator? Or is that not something, or is that not really something that's within your jurisdiction of your job?
Um it, yeah, we can gather that information internally. It's, you know, it, there's some work that goes into it, obviously. But um, yeah, absolutely. I, there's no, we don't have a mechanism in place, per se, for gathering that information. But I think it's just, we can create one.
A- and I would think that there could be, yeah, I think of the, a number of people uh within our community uh in leadership roles and so forth, that um, you know, could spend a day working with various stakeholder groups in terms of what would be identif, identified and just processing some questions um so that there's some anonymity um through that process as well. Um Heather, it'd be great for all of those, but you know, you, it, you walk into the HR director's office and then people just start sweating, you know. It's like going to the principal's office. So um, you know, maybe all but uh those could be uh worked at around tho, those ways. But just that basic gathering information, prioritizing that uh and having some uh a good plan going into that, I think, would be helpful.
So I, I, I'm interested in in putting a few commissioners together to help create some of that. I do think the city attorney needs to be involved. I think Ms. Lasky needs to be involved. Um but getting some of those things in order for us to even decide where we want to go and how we want to get there. I, and my wheels are spinning because that was a lot to absorb.
Right.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the gentleman you met with about the eval, he talked to you about collecting stakeholder information. Would he be a good avenue to help us kind of show what we, what, what we need in an administrator, if that makes sense?
So just to give background to the rest, to, to the rest of uh the commission, uh Commissioner Gauss and I uh had a a Zoom call with uh the individual that developed a a three-sixty evaluation for the city of Battle Creek. And uh their wheelhouse is generally strategic planning. Uh but then through the strategic planning with, process with Battle Creek, had done uh valuation components uh as well. So um that's one potential. Uh as we look through here, and although, you know, Peter Dam's is, is a great guy and has that focus, we also see that there's some of these firms that uh do very similar things. Uh so would we want to kind of package them? Would that be an option? Because again, it's that thing, if we hire them for a search firm and they also work for our evaluation and, oh, they do uh leadership development for department heads, uh that might be a good marriage moving forward uh to have that long-term support for um a professional organization or a professional group uh to help us, to help the city administrator, to help department heads uh from here on out too. So again, another big.
Great opportunity here to, to do some really great things. It's a lot of information at one time.
So, so um, so to facilitate a little bit, um I heard the mayor say we could move forward with interviews and kind of hear like a snapshot. But then also, is there a possibility then to start some of the work moving in place on, here are some evaluation ideas, here are some contract ideas, so that those two pieces don't wait until we get the final selection and then say, well, we don't have those things in place. That's going to take three months to work on. Um and knowing that this isn't going to be a quick, speedy process to just come up with uh an evaluation.
Do you think the committee um could possibly, like, in a month, like at the second meeting of the month, like already have some things to present at a work study to the commission so we can talk about it? You know, do you think that is doable?
I think some of that depends on uh the attorney's schedule and Ms. Lasky's schedule, et cetera. Um but I, I would say the first of April, we should have kind of a plan, for sure. Um I'm not saying that we'd have to stop with this, but I, I think that's a lot to put together, stakeholder information. Um, I'm not saying that we'd have to stop with this, but I I think that's a lot to put together, stakeholder information, et cetera. Um, and I think maybe the first of April would be a better goal date, because getting outside information takes a little longer than.
And then, am I also hearing then that we would like a stakeholder input done in in-house, in-city, in-county? Someone locally, not from a professional firm, to at least give us this initial snapshot of, to answer the question, what do we want in our next city administrator? What qualities do we want?
I I think that's a good idea to start. Um, it get, one of the things that caught my eye was um, commission education, and just starting to hear what our people want i- is going to start pushing us in the right direction. So I I, if, I do think that's a good idea.
I think there's a, your presentation and the work that you've done, Bob, is is great. I'm not sure. We don't want to move too quickly through this process. We need to be diligent, we need to um, make sure we're going to make the right decision. In terms of getting the work done, though, I'm not sure that we need to be tied to our regular commission schedule. I'm thinking that we're going to have to have a few special meetings throughout this, just. We can't, we can't wait for two meetings a month, we'll never get the job done, is kind of my opinion. So I think we just all need to be prepared to the idea, we're thinking about the idea that we will be having special meetings as as we move along, um, when and how, you know, those get called, we'll have to decide as we move through the process. But I again, I don't think we just need to look at, you know, two meetings a month and take this thing in to two or three years uh, in in terms of the process, so that's, that's my comment. But the, all the information, and obviously, we've got a lot of homework to do, got a binder full of information that that Ms. Lasky has has brought to us, and now we got home and, you know, go home and start reading. Thank you.
Anything else to add, uh, Ms. Lasky?
No, except that I'm available for whatever, you know, you all want me to, whatever you want my involvement to be, I'll, I'm available, I'll make myself available, so.
Thank you for all the work you've done, Heather, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you, Heather, so much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Pop. All right, moving on to number two, a discussion regarding authorizing the acting city administrator to sign a complaint against Johnson Controls. I'm going to turn that over to our city attorney, Burke Castleberry.
Seven, seven, excuse me, six. City entered into a, entered into a contract with Johnson Controls. Essentially, essentially, it was to uh, fix energy management systems, security systems, lighting upgrades, uh, HVAC systems, and portions of the water treatment plant. Johnson Controls is demanding that we sign a substantial completion uh, document. This, this contract was for almost $10 million, it was like 9.9 million, or, yeah, 9.9 million. Um, I believe the only amount left for the city to pay at this point is $100,000. Uh, Johnson Controls has uh, threatened to sue the city multiple times, because we, the city has not paid that, but the reason that the city hasn't paid is because they have not done the work. Um, I can tell you, I had many discussions with a prior administrator, as well as many department heads, and I know some department heads are here tonight, if you have specific questions. But, but the temperature control in City Hall, for one thing, is just atrocious. And it's directly related to the the work performed by Johnson Controls. Um, I have been working on a complaint against Johnson Controls, which uh, I didn't bring it with me, because it was so big, it wouldn't fit in my briefcase. It's substanti- it's it's about four inches thick, um, but I'm I'm ready to move forward with it. And I'm asking the commission to authorize the administrator, the interim administrator uh, to give final approval to file that complaint.
I move to give the administrator authorization to file that complaint.
Support.
All in favor, say aye. Or, I don't know why I did that, I'm losing my mind, sorry, I'm just.
Is there a reason, I guess we?
They can, they can make a motion, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I was going to let everybody know. Um, the um, city attorney did reach out to me before this meeting and said that you can make a motion, and it's just an all in favor, say aye in a second, but we, it doesn't need to be a resolution, but we do have to make a motion for him to act.
Sure, I was just wondering why we didn't do a resolution and have this information.
I I asked that it not be a resolution, because that is nothing more than a formal motion. This is strictly to move forward with the lawsuit. Um, I didn't think it met the criteria for a resolution.
Okay.
So moving on, we have a discussion regarding authorizing the acting city administrator to execute a settlement agreement with Weisberger Ventures, and I will be handing it over again to our city attorney, Burke Castleberry.
Uh, we've previously spoke about this, um, we all, we spoke about it at the same time we were discussing the uh, condemnation proceedings related to the tunnel project. Um, however, uh, there was never a vote to approve that uh, settlement agreement that we discussed. I am asking the commission to approve or to authorize the city administrator to execute that settlement agreement in order to settle that lawsuit uh, that was filed.
I move that we approve the city administrator to um, make the settlement.
Support.
All in favor, say aye. All right, now moving on to the Adrian Inn discussion, I will be turning it over to our acting city administrator, Vince Ammer.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. Uh, was hoping to get some direction as we move through relocating those residents at the Adrian Inn property. Uh, soon it will be vacant, hoping to get some direction as to what to do with that property. Uh, I asked our city engineer to be present tonight, Matt, if you could come up and give us an idea of uh, where we stand with that property, and perhaps on what, some of uh, what our options are.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, so looking at our options, uh, we have actually found out today that there are eight residents left at the Adrian Inn. Um, six of those residents never had eviction notices, uh, so we have to go through that process again, which uh, takes roughly six weeks. Um, so uh, the attorneys have advised us that they are going to be starting to file those evictions um, this week. Uh, today, the courts were not in session. Um, so um, as we go through this, we can uh, start to evict a couple of the residents currently. Um, but there are some that will be uh, remaining for the next couple of weeks. Um, as we progress through this, uh, we are going to have to do a, an abatement survey, an asbestos survey, to see what needs abated out of the Adrian Inn. Um, this survey is going to cost uh, about $3,500 to complete. Uh, we have already moved forward with that, the survey will be completed tomorrow. We'll have um, we'll have some direction on what, what all needs uh, um, removed from the site. And then we can proceed with demo plans, if that's the direction you guys want to take. Um, once we get that report back, which will probably be in a week or so, uh, we can reach out to um, an asbestos removal company and uh, get some quotes, um, which might in turn give us an option to um, move forward quickly or go through the general route of uh, the bid process. Um, obviously, the longer uh, process that we take, the longer the the business or the the building is going to stay up, um, which causes some challenges. We've spent uh, many hours out there already, um, on overtime with employees and contractors, um, just since we've taken the inn back, and we've already lost a couple thousand dollars. Um, so obviously, the longer the building stands, the more money we are going to put into it. We have looked at some options as far as demo. Um, uh, I got a, an estimate from a local contractor that thinks they can do the demo for about $300,000. Um, we believe uh, Public Works Department uh, can do the work themselves for about um, $170,000. Um, so that could be a savings there, if that's the direction we want to take. Uh, taking that direction, uh, it allows us to act a little quicker, we don't have to bid out the demo. Um, generally, when you bid something out, it's already um, six weeks to do the bidding process, uh, send contracts back and forth, get everything signed, and then start planning for the demo. Um, if DPW is uh, able to do it, we'd be able to to start as soon as the abatement is completed. Um, so that's one option. Um, it would also allow us to um, save some money on the, on the backside. Uh, we'd be able to separate some of the the metal from the site, which would allow some savings, um, but also take uh, some of the concrete on-site to our, our site, um, which would generate savings on our stone side. So some of you guys may not know, but we um, all of our concrete from our projects, we take to the compost site and we crush each year. Um, so this would allow us to build some of our, our concrete piles and then crush it, and then we use it to put back in our stone pile, uh, into our streets. Um, so we do generate some savings on our end if we do complete the work ourselves. I think that is all I had, unless there's something else you wanted me to discuss, Vince?
No, I think that covers it, thank you, man.
Thank you.
It's, I've got a couple of questions, I heard about the need to start eviction process on, what, a half a dozen? Um, I've been told, or my understanding is, we have other people who have occupied rooms at, at the inn, is that the case?
That's correct, uh, we, uh, as the Adrian Police Department, we respond regularly to the Adrian Inn for uh, people out there. Uh, we've had issues with some of the water lines being scrapped, some of the electrical wiring being cut out for scrap. Um, we respond out there pretty regularly, yes.
Uh, do we, are there other people living there, other than those who had leases and are going to be evicted?
Uh, my best guess would be yes, uh, but I I don't have any uh, hard number of how many that might be.
Okay, thanks.
Conversations about uh, any groups or firms that are interested in the purchase of that property? Has that uh, surfaced since our last discussion?
So uh, Administrator Elliot did receive a letter from the county library expressing interest. Uh, there has also been some conversations with Adrian College expressing interest, uh, those, those are the two that I'm aware of.
But we have not uh, put an official for sale sign, worked with a realtor or anything like that, a commercial developer uh, on that front, and so it's just been people that have reached out to us.
That's correct, just word of mouth, mouth so far.
Okay.
Mr. Castleberry, was there something you'd like to share? You appear to seem like you wanted to share.
Well, uh, the comment by Commissioner Gauss, I I just want to make it clear, it's not a free for, free-for-all at the Adrian Inn. Um, as these rooms have become vacant, the city is securing these, these rooms to the best of our ability. Now, there have been incidents where people have ripped ripped out the HVAC units, and they have gone into the rooms and and they've had to be removed, and then the units replaced. Um, also, the water is an issue out there, because there's one supply, is that correct, Matt? One supply, so when you, when you have a water heater supply for, you know, 80 rooms or whatever it is, and you have two rooms being occupied, you essentially have no hot water, unless you run the water for two hours. Um, so there's not a lot of people out there, is is what I'm telling you. It, and the city is securing it as they go, I just want to make sure the engineering department is recognized, they they are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Thank you for that clarification.
And to be clear, it really is not salvageable without massive amounts. I mean, just not even something we could even do, correct, Matt? Okay.
So were you looking for any direction? On, like, which route or or input, or are you asking for anything, or just was it a presentation tonight? I'm just getting clarification.
Really, just an update for this evening, we uh, we were under the impression that we were closer to having it be empty today than we actually are. So something to put on the radar, something to be cognizant of as we move forward. Um, the survey is something that I I had asked Matt to conduct, that's something we would need, regardless whether we're going to uh, do an RFP for that remediation, or whether we go with someone that we've already contracted. So that's, those are the steps that we've taken so far, just to bring everyone up to speed.
And were these residents, the the residents that were through housing help, correct? Is that, that the residents that are still there?
Yes, that's correct.
And were, were these residents part of um, the Quonix High Rise Tower? Sorry, I know.
River View Terrace.
I I know it from the old name, uh, unfortunately, not the new name, uh, River View Terrace, or were they uh, added on uh, after that, do you know?
Uh, as far as I know, some, but but not all.
Okay. And then any demo, obviously, would come from general fund dollars, uh, correct?
That's correct, if we were to do it ourselves or uh, bid out, yes.
As as to direction, I guess, if if you're asking for opinions, um, I reserve the right to change my mind, just so everyone knows that, once I get more information. But as of today, I would say we have our city employees demolish it, we put it up for sale, and try and get someone in there that, um, for my personal opinion, I would appreciate someone who is taxpaying, rather than a nonprofit. Uh, but I don't know if that will be one of the best bids and one of the best options. That's my direction.
I I think that's a great idea, with American One Credit Union that came in, uh, you know, there's a good blight redevelopment uh, program that uh, took place there, and if there's um, opportunities for us to market and get it out there in the real estate world, uh, there's, could be some more tax dollars coming in.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, as we proceed, there will be a large expenditure with the abatement. It's projected in the couple hundred thousand dollar range. So once, yeah, once that report comes through in in a week or so, we'll have a better understanding of what uh, that cost will be.
And we'd be doing that, no matter what, whether we demoed or not, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to other items, you're back up, Matt, I hear you need to present something. I was told by our acting city administrator right before the meeting, so if you want to present.
Thank you. Um, so we found out uh, through a random inspection with the state, our fuel tanks at DPW did not pass inspection. Um, it is nothing that we have failed to do, uh, the tanks are just getting old, uh, and it does have a leak. They are underground tanks, so we need to take care of this kind of rapidly. Um, we will be get a full report, uh, hopefully this week, from the state. Um, but when asked uh, how much this may cost, they said it could cost up into a couple hundred thousand dollar range. Um, this would be uh, taking the existing uh, gas tank out and replacing it. Um, but he did say that our diesel tank is also 40 years old, and if we replace one, we might as well replace the other while we're at it. So um, just wanted to give you guys a heads up that this will be coming along. Probably, hopefully, the next meeting, we'll have some more information for you, um, and we can make some swift uh, action happen, so.
Are these shared tanks with uh, the school district, so would that help offset the cost or not?
Uh, they don't necessarily pay for the tanks, they pay for each gallon that they fill up. Uh, right now, there's an agreement in place, uh, that was set up a long time ago. Um, the school district, LASD, um, and uh, Laney Transportation Authority pay eight cents extra per gallon. Um, so that kind of will help offset the cost, but it's not nearly as much as what, what this uh, total cost is going to be. So just wanted to give you a heads up that that is coming as well. Sorry for the bad news.
Can you give us any good news tonight, Matt? I'm just asking.
Not this time, I'll try and come up with something next week.
Are there any other items, Commissioners? All right, we will move on. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky, with a second from Commissioner Castleberry, roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to our regular agenda, under special orders. We have Special Order dash one, a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the amendment to the downtown development plan and tax increment financing plan. At this time, we will begin the hearing.
So I looked over the the proposal, and I was a bit confused by part of it. So like, the proposal had said that it took into account like the the public, the the survey that was sent out. It also said that it took into account like the downtown comprehensive plan and all this. But there was one item on there that was kind of weird because it was an earmarked like five million dollars for a parking structure downtown, and it looked like it was going in like the the like North Winter Street Lot, which is where in the Lenawee Voice, I, you know, there's going to be apparently a new parking lot put in there, even though the parking study that was done years ago said we don't need more parking being built. And last year, we invested just short of a quarter of a million dollars, adding thirty spots to the Church Street Lot. And at the end of last year, or maybe it was the beginning of last, it was the beginning of last year, the city purchased that lot for two hundred thousand dollars. And if we extrapolate that out, I think the estimate was eighty spaces. That space on in the Church Street Lot, if you take out the cost of purchasing the land, it was six thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and some some odd cents per parking space. So we're looking at a total cost of a little over half a million dollars to add more parking that a parking study we paid for said we don't need. But then there's also a parking structure for five million dollars. I just kind of had some concerns with that. Thanks.
Zoom residents can also, I mean, Zoom, uh, participants, sorry, can also comment as well, but we do have another one in-house right now.
Good evening. Mary Seeler from Gallery Shops. I'm not sure. I didn't get to see the plan, but from personal experience, there's no parking. So if there is a plan to put in more parking, that would be great. I came tonight with an idea of how we could do that temporarily. In the Church Street parking lot right now, yes, we did add some spaces, but we also add took away the whole half of the whole west side of it with the new construction. If you look to the south, there is the old fire station that has maybe twenty, twenty-five open parking spaces every day. And I think the Midwest contractors could maybe park over there and walk across the street, which would give our customers actually parking spaces, because you do go in the Church Church Street parking lot right now, and you go around, and you go around, and you go around, and pretty soon you just park illegally because you can't find a spot. I know that that's a private parking lot over there, but I also know that my associate does the irrigation for the for the marijuana locations, and he showed me the report that said Adrian City is getting half a million dollars a year from the tax dollars from the marijuana places. So I'm not sure where that money's going, but maybe just a couple thousand dollars could go to the private people across the street and ask them if we could use that temporarily until that construction is done on South Main. Just an idea.
I now call this public hearing closed. Moving on to Special Order dash two, a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the special assessment rule for SAD number three hundred and ninety-nine Church Street Reconstruction. I now call the public hearing open.
Good evening. Matt Tomaszewski, City of Adrian Engineering Services. I just wanted to apologize for this special hearing. We will be doing this hearing again next week or next meeting as well. There was a clerical error on our side. Some of the residents are actually paying less. So it's good news for the residents, not all the residents, but some of them. So we we found the issue and we took care of it, and we're asking for to complete this hearing and also do a hearing next week as well to finalize the cost. So just wanted to clarify things.
So will you be tabling this item?
That's correct. We are not tabling it. There's a public hearing today. Matt or Michelle contacted me about this, and I thought it prudent that we we have it correct and then have a second public hearing.
Thank you.
Hearing no more comments. I now call this special, sorry, this public hearing closed. Moving on to Special Order dash three. It's a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the establishment of SAD number four hundred improvements to Sarah Street. I now call this public hearing open.
Hi, my name is Tracy Rhodes. We, my brother and I have property on Sarah. I got notified of this meeting that yesterday due to the mail. I'm concerned because it looks like you're asking me to invest twenty percent of the value of this house into repairing gutters and curbs. And that just seems like a lot considering the value of the house.
Hearing no more comment. I now call this public hearing closed. Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero zero one is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter eighteen, Division three of the Adrian City Code by adding a new section eighteen dash sixty-three to amend the downtown development plan and tax increment financing plan for the Downtown Development Authority. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on that?
This discussion related to the, so the tax capture that we're looking at from the previous meeting that we heard is in the area of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which will incrementally increase based on the tax capture over the years. So very miniscule in terms of the plan and the projects that we have before us. So we're talking about a five million dollar parking structure, about other components of that. This tax capture is not going to comprehend the full cost of this. So therefore, that places a burden upon this commission and future commissions to make sure that we capture that money, find creative ways, grants, opportunities to pay for this, because it's not going to be paid all from the tax capture. And even though I'm looking at you, Mary, I do see your consultant at the
Yes, I was I was going to ask our consultant, yes.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I want to emphasize that the tax capture in place is an extension of the existing tax capture, so it does not capture any new taxes or increased property taxes for any of the property owners in the DDA district. I know that wasn't your question, but I just wanted to get that out there. In terms of the cost of these other projects that were mentioned, like the parking structure, the state statute really is, you know, creating this plan is authorizing the DDA to spend on these projects over the next thirty years. It is not a earmark. It is not something that says you must spend. It's a list of possibilities. And even in the the text of the plan, you know, we laid it out in a table with some of the specifics that we heard through the process, there's flexibility beyond the things that are listed in the table. So if it's turns out that the parking structure, we're all driving around in autonomous cars fifteen years from now, we don't need parking structures in the same way that we need them now, then there's potential that you need more green space or other things that you invest in. So I I just want to emphasize that, yes, there will be grants needed, and there will be need a need for community partnerships and other fundraising opportunities to commit to the continued progress of the DDA, which I think you're in a moment of great advancement in those terms right now, and that can continue and should continue. But by no means is this prescribing or dictating that the city must spend on these projects that have been laid out in the plan. These are simply things that this will allow the DDA to work towards in the future.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments or discussion? We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R twenty-five dash zero zero nine is from engineering. It is a resolution to approve the establishment of Special Assessment District number four hundred improvements to Sarah Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yeah.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on, Resolution R twenty-five dash zero ten is from Community Development. It is a resolution to approve a change order for the Winter Street Properties Project. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this?
Can we get a just an overview of this for the public, please?
Good evening. So we did an asbestos survey on the Winter Street properties, and at the time of the survey, it was thought that the roof on the Eagles property was unsafe. During the asbestos abatement, it was determined that that is a steel and concrete roof, so it was safe. They went back in and evaluated the amount of asbestos there and realized that doing this change order would actually save us money in the long run, because if we didn't do the change order, we would have had to treat the entire building as hazardous material, and that's an expensive disposal.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Commissioners, you have miscellaneous reports and minutes in your packet. Are there any questions or concerns? Moving on, it is now time for general public comment. There is a three-minute time limit, which you will see up on the screen. We will start inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, please state your name and your place of residence. And just to also clarify, there will be no comment back at you at this point. It is your time to make your comment, and commissioners and myself can talk to you afterwards.
Jerry Tim, Adrian resident. I'd like to emphasize the importance of tapping into the skills and enthusiasm of community members to ensure that Adrian is the best city it can be. Our community has talented, knowledgeable, and passionate individuals who are eager to contribute to the success of our city. These residents can offer valuable insights when it comes to projects and programs to ensure they will be successful and benefit as many residents as possible. Yet, in my experience, the city is quick to dismiss these valuable resources. For example, the downtown bike loop. I offered my help on this project again and again to no avail. I'm the board chair of ReBicycle. I helped run Bike Day at Lincoln Elementary. I bike thousands of miles a year, mostly on our local streets. I walk in our community as much as I can. I've read countless urban planning books, studies, design guides, as well as insights from leaders in the urban planning profession and Complete Streets and Vision Zero, respectively. I pointed out glaring safety and usability issues with the proposed design, giving sources that showed the design falls short of best practices in several ways, as well as how it would negatively affect walkability along Comstock Park. I created alternative designs at no cost to the city that addressed these issues, and the former city administrator even admitted that my designs were safer than the proposed design. Yet I was largely ignored, and no updates were made. Another project that would have benefited from this approach is Springbrook Avenue, a school street with a design speed so high that a student that lives right across the street from the middle school is now driven to school daily after having too many close calls with speeding drivers while trying to use the crosswalk. When we engage with skilled, enthusiastic residents, we not only improve the quality of our projects, but also build trust and foster a sense of ownership in our community. Other cities have seen tremendous success by involving local experts and advocates in their planning processes. I'm challenging the commission to commit to incorporating input from local experts and advocates in meaningful ways. Let's not waste talent, passion, and local knowledge that exists in our community. By working together, we can ensure that every project reflects the best of what Adrian has to offer. There's still time to fix the downtown bike loop. Ground has not been broken. I don't want the bike loop to become the next Springbrook Avenue. You all have my contact contact information. I look forward to hearing from you. Thanks.
Hearing no more public comment. Inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. You will also see the time on your screen and and you also need to state your name and place of residence, please. Hearing no more public comment. We will now begin our commissioner comments. I'm going to start it off by just giving a great big thank you to Matt Tomaszewski and the entire Department of Public Works. I received many, many people stopping me, calling me, whatnot about how great the snow removal was this past week, especially the one that happened in the midweek. And they, I know that Matt said they worked a lot of extra shifts in the way that they were able to get everybody out there, and they finally have a full crew for the first time in a long time. But just praise up and down, especially from some elderly people that have always had issues with the snow being piled right in front of their driveways, and it wasn't this time the way they plowed it, but they were just very, very impressed with the snow removal and very grateful and thankful. And one is a former Department of Public Works superintendent who's very critical. He's also my father-in-law. And he praised and praised and praised the snow removal, and that is a miracle in itself. So you should be really happy about that one. But but many thanks from citizens all over when I was out and about just about the snow removal. So thank you so very much. And we know a lot of hours were put in, and we are grateful.
Only thing, I I have two items. One, it is the recruitment phase for the Lenawee County Moriyama Middle School Exchange Program that's starting. So any student within all of Lenawee County, current sixth and seventh grade students, So any, uh, student within all of Lenaway County, uh, current sixth and seventh grade students, uh, interested. There are some, uh, public meetings that are coming up, starting the end of, uh, of February. And the plan is that we would be hosting those eight students and two educators, uh, the end of October, uh, right around, uh, Halloween time. I have flyers here if anyone's interested. And then, uh, lastly, I guess just my comment on, uh, parking. I don't know what the, the parameters are with, uh, Midwest and their subcontractors, but my experience with construction was that within those larger contracts, the ability to designate where parking takes place. Uh, and I do understand that there's a lot of lunch activities taking place with workers and their cars in those back parking lots, because I'm one that parks illegally when I go to Nova's, uh, to get my candy. But, um, I know there's a lot of construction folks there. And if we could, uh, uh, lease a parking lot, uh, across the street for construction workers or designate a better spot. I, I think that would help with, uh, uh, not only, uh, guests coming in and out of businesses, but also for business owners and employees parking, uh, in that area as well.
Hearing no more public, public comment, I'm telling you, hearing no more commissioner comments. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned, thank you.